So, at this time, Shannon, is there audience participation?
There is. First, we have Roxanne Behringer.
Good evening. I'm here to address the email that my husband received from Mr. Fury with the questions we had concerning the Darrow Road project. Coincidentally, I see that legislation's been started to, been drawn up to proceed to take our property by eminent domain. This could have very well been avoided if the administration had had the consideration or concerns to arrange meetings with the residents directly impacted with this project. I attempted to arrange a meeting with the mayor and the city engineer a while back to find out they were both on vacation. I'm going to address the email answers here. The catch basins are to be located smack dab in the middle of our front yards, but yet none are shown for Warren Parkway condominium association, and I'm pretty sure there's a lot more impervious surfaces there. Now, we are going to be asked if a particular location would be better instead of right in the middle of the yards, but that's probably only because Mr. Fury emailed.
Why would you do that?
The decision for the septic systems was already made for us. Usually, when sanitary is installed, the cost is assessed to the landowner. We were not even asked, although I did question Amy on it. I approached the city on this issue previously when Mayor Prokop's husband was the city engineer. At that time, I was told the sewers across the street at Deer Run were private sewers. I don't know. I think they're still processed by our wastewater treatment plant, but I guess they're private somehow. When I was on the planning commission, Mr. Finch said the county wanted homes with septic systems to be provided access to centralized sewers. Therefore, a list of homes with septics was compiled, and planning commission had it. If you look at the zoning code, the sizes for sanitary lots versus centralized sewer lots is quite different. And it's in my opinion that the city has devalued our property. There are three homes, not two homes, that would be affected by sanitary sewers. One, the city owns. And two of these homes are on the historical list of significant homes, although, from what I've seen, nobody cares about the historical homes. We've already lost, and I'm going to give the council clerk a list of homes that are on the list and the ones that we've lost. The email answer for trees that we got was not conducive to the question. Some of the trees on the southerly end of the right-of-way, end of our property are right on the right-of-way and property line. I'm not asking to be paid. I want re-trees, more trees planted there. They are environmentally correct screening, noise, pollution, and wind block for our private residents and are going to be taken down and not replaced. The city requires developers to replace trees according to the tree ordinance. Driveway drain. They proposed to slope the driveways to the lawn, is what we found out. We just found this stuff out now. To the lawn. And maintaining the right-of-way that we had paid for to be enclosed with pipe. We had to reseed that lawn in the right-of-way numerous times at our cost due to the saltwater runoffs from the street. Now, are we going to have to reseed our whole front yard because the saltwater runoff's going to go there because they're going to taper the driveway to our lawns?
One minute, Mrs. Behringer.
Reimbursement for the culvert pipe. We received two different answers again. The bottom line is the city is offering us less than what we paid to have the ditch filled in, which we have maintained. Incorporated in this offer is the purchase of property, loss of trees, temporary right-of-way, inconvenience during the road project, dust and dirt for which the city said they would not clean our home, but already has set precedent by cleaning the Turk home further down the street when McTerry and Parkway went in. The historical homes are not, I'm sorry, my pages got mixed up here. The city can spend $80,000 to renovate and remodel the lobby at City Hall that council had to approve the appropriations for, but their consideration for a homeowner is less than $2 a square foot. I'm cordially asking you, and I'm asking for responses from each and every council member, if this was your property, would you be willing to accept this? I have more, but I'll say it under 9904.
Okay.
Shannon, is there more?
Roxanne Behringer for 9904.
Council was asked by the residents to put this on the ballot. Wasn't done. One thing I'd like council to remember is that our country's freedom is not free, and neither is free money. It comes at a cost to the taxpayer who is funding this, the taxpayer, and also comes at a cost to the residents. It directly impacts. Mr. Yates recently had an interview on TV concerning the old-school proposal and stated it will bring outsiders to town. Is council here to represent the outsiders or for the residents? And now, I'll talk on 9904. We asked that, we wanted to extend the driveway as a safety issue because the driveway is at an angle, and the intent was always there to straighten the driveway out. We cannot go to the south because whether the city knows it or not, that's where the septic system is located. The area that they have for the catch basin is directly out from where the garage doors are, so you can't straighten the driveway out if the city purchases a property and the catch basin goes there. Nobody from the city has contacted us, has asked any of our concerns. I have come to public meetings, asked questions, but the residents don't count. Thank you.
Is there any other?
Yes. Michael Behringer.
As was mentioned earlier, that the city's in negotiations on the appropriation for this easements and right-of-ways. Not once have been contacted by anybody from the city, not once. No one from the city has contacted us other than in response to when we have contacted someone from the city. No one has come out there and been able to tell me what exactly is what on my, going on on my property, not one thing. They don't know. They'll get back to me with answers, which they did with some answers. There's still questions, and there's still no answers. And if that's what you want, you'll just have to keep going with your eminent domain. But I feel like I'm being treated like a third-class citizen. No one in that has ever bothered to say what needs to be done here. You know? I asked about the, where the sidewalk was going. They're going to take out the pipe that I paid to put in. They're going to take that out and put a ditch back in. I'm not going to maintain that ditch. And then, they said they're going to put a sidewalk back in, and they're going to put a catch basin in. Who's going to tie all my drain pipes back into that catch basin? I got to pay for it twice? I don't think I should have to pay for it twice. I paid to have it done the first time. You want to dig that pipe out and put a sidewalk in there and fill it in later? You know? No one can ask, answer my question to why. You know, they're doing this. Why they're digging the pipe out? Why they're doing this? No answers. They don't know. The one guy from the real estate acquisitions says you don't have to talk to the city about that. We tried to get all the city, no one answered. We got all Mr. Fury, he came out. He got some answers to our questions, but there's still more questions to be answered. But no one has contacted us that, that told me all my answers.
Amy, can you come up, please, and talk about the, how the process works so that we have a clear understanding of that?
Excuse me, this is remonstrance, and this is the time where the people must speak, and maybe after remonstrance.
Do we still have more people on remonstrance?
There is nothing further.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, Amy, please. Can you with the answer?
To address a few questions on how the right-of-way process occurs through acquisition on a project. There is a process, a Uniform Act, which is a federal law, which requires personnel that are basically educated, trained, and pre-approved to present and negotiate the process. We have hired that firm, which is Trans System, who has done the appraisals on the land, who provide to the residents at the beginning on the onset of, when they start the process, an information packet that's 22 pages long, I think 21 pages long, that says what to expect when, when the land process comes through there. In there, they discuss what happens if we need your property. And one of the things it says in there, and I'll read the actual section specifically on there, is that general information is discussed at public meetings but not specific details. When the acquisition process begins, a realty specialist will discuss the plans and show exactly how the transportation improvement will affect your property. I do know that the realty, the individual has contacted and has left a number of voicemails. I was contacted by Trans System saying that they were not receiving return phone calls from the property owner. When we had started the process of exclamation, that went out in August associated with this property, at that time, I do know that they were on vacation, but when they did meet and they had met with, I believe his name is David Devanzo, who is our, the person that's been assigned to that, they requested that the area be field-staked and some other questions associated with the property. That comes back in, goes to our design engineer, which is GPD, and myself. We physically staked three properties out there, two of which, I believe, are in discussion here, of requests for more information, how it was going to affect that. With that, there's a back-and-forth that has to occur with, with the person that's doing that has to document the whole process associated, what is eligible, what is not eligible in the Uniform Act associated with the work. I have no problem meeting with the representative from Trans Systems and the property owner to go out there and answer some of the questions. I have not gotten that call from David that he needs that assistance or even the request in terms of that. I do not, I've had another property owner that had the same issues as far as they weren't happy originally with it, and I said, you know, I can't talk, negotiate that whole process, work through, and they have since worked through with their negotiator on that. So, like I said, there's still room in terms of here as far as how the process works, getting answers to their questions, but that meeting has to be done so that it's all documented properly according to the, to the act there. Anything else you want me to address on terms of the right-of-way? I know that she brought up a lot of things, but that's how the right-of-way process is occurring through there. We do have somebody that the city hired that is a representative for the city, that is certified in doing the process and has all the requirements. I don't have that certification. I don't believe anybody at the city does have that certification.
So, you're certain that they received the initial paperwork, the 20...
Oh, yeah. I know they received the paperwork. I know that we've been out and physically surveyed their property as a request for them to see exactly how the impact would occur. Now, I don't want to get into a mess. Like I said, I'm more than happy to meet with, with David and the property owner and show them exactly and answer some of those questions associated with the plan. I know that they're concerned with the catch basin, that when Mr. Fury, you know, at least took a list of questions that could have gone, you know, through the process, my comment back was, you know, it needs to be at the offset. It can go, it can slide closer to the driveway. I think the existing one is closer to the driveway. So, there are answers to some of those questions. It really is what's in the project and what, what can be negotiate, what can be put according to the Uniform Act. And that's the part I don't want to get overly involved in because I want them to document it appropriately so we're not out of compliance with that. But we can address, you know, some of those questions. I think one of the driveways was asked, I think, there's two properties, the southern property, the question that was asked was could the driveway match what the width is? On the northern property, there was a question to our service department that came in saying, hey, can you replace the culvert? We want to widen the driveway. They called me knowing that there was a project there, and I said, you know, we are widening it. It's 10 foot two. We're going to 12, which is the requirement. Now, that's something, again, they can, you know, through the negotiation process, discuss and go out and mark and see what those issues are. Like I said, I have no problem doing any of that, but there is a process, and we are following that process. Again, it's just the documentation and the paperwork. We're more than willing, and I think David is expecting a, has been expecting a call back and has made a number of attempts to get a call to try and set up another meeting to just deal with this particular property.
Okay, so just to be clear, in order for you to meet, to stay in compliance, you need to, you need to have sort of like a meeting or a person that meets with you?
Well, the, yes. They should be there to make sure that we're basically staying compliant.
Oh, okay.
That was, that was the information I got back. They had no problem with us setting up a meeting. If she wants to set up a meeting today and get a hold of, whether David could make it or somebody else from Trans System that is certified to do that would be there associated with making sure that the process was still appropriate and proper.
Amy, did you, did you meet with any of the residents prior to the getting involved in all of this?
Only, only one that had a lot of questions. There was a property further north who had a number of questions throughout the process. Their impacted by the intersection would come in. Again, they had the same concern when they first got their fair market value analysis. I said, you know, I can't really speak to that. I'm not, the whole process thing, you know, told them to work that through there, work through with the, the real estate specialist that was out there in terms of what they've got, and they could do that. So, that's the only one, but they contacted me regularly with concerns of what was going on in there. So, that was the only property. Nobody else did eye contact directly. Like I said, a letter went out with what to expect when we need your property, you know, in terms of documentation. Phone calls were made, they were provided, they were mailed, the, everybody was mailed their appraisal, showing how the appraisal was done, and contacted by Trans Systems to, you know, then work through that process. Of which, we have 15 signs so far. The 10 that you have listed, I think, I think it's 10, we're, know we're pretty close to a couple of those on there, and I discussed it earlier, that a lot of those are, other than the three residents, are more of commercial properties.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. At this time, then, we'll move on to council communication and committee reports. Mr. Yates?
Yes, thank you. The planning commission met yesterday, and there was a couple items on the agenda. One was a expansion that was a final site plan approval for GE.
Yeah, if you could wait a minute.
Okay.
Okay, Ms. James.
The GE expansion that was approved by planning commission was a final site plan approval. The Microcell Tower Company that, we talked about that legislation earlier tonight, but there was a couple of new locations that was mentioned in our caucus that was favorably looked upon by, by a planning commission. I don't know if they're still in a, in a situation where they can finalize all their locations. I think they're down to one that, that they're still working on. There is a community relations meeting this Thursday at 5:30. I'm not sure the location.
Library.
That's the library this time, okay. And then, lastly, from a Parks and Rec standpoint, we have a new event that I'm sure Derek's going to talk about. It's called Luminosity, and it's a lighting event that will start here at City Hall and move its way toward, toward the square, 6:00 PM, and that's on November 29th. So, I just encourage people to mark their calendars for that because it's going to be an inaugural event, sounds like it's going to be a good time, so, that's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Roden.
The Environmental Commission met on the 13th of November, and they were discussing their upcoming projects for 2015. That is all I have to report this evening.
Thank you. Mr. Scafidi.
Thank you. Good evening. My, I met earlier with the finance committee, and I'm sure the chairman's going to give his report this evening, so I won't go any further there. My only other committee will be the BZA, which meets tomorrow, 6:30 here right at City Hall. And that's all I have tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a couple of announcements here concerning some boards and commissions that will be opening. Request for appointments must be received by December 19th at 4:30 PM. They can be emailed to scollins@twinsburg.oh.us. With this, we need your name, address, email, where to reach you, the ward you reside in, and which, which board or commissions you would be interested in. The boards that we have openings on, we have the Architectural Review Board is in need of two members. Capital Improvements Board for wards four and five will be needing positions for. The Environmental Commission, Ward 1, 3, 4, and 5, we're going to need appointments for those. And then, Parks and Rec Commission, Ward 1, 2, and then one at-large position will be open. So, again, if you're interested in all, in serving on a board or commission, we have, appointments must be received by Friday, December 19th at 4:00 PM. They can be emailed to scollins@twinsburg.oh.us. I'm sure you can find that link on the website. Please include name, address, email, best number to be reached at, the ward you reside in, and which board and commission you're interested in. And those boards that we have openings on would be Architectural Review Board, need two members, looks like it's non-ward-specific. Capital Improvements Board, wards 4 and 5. Environmental Commission, wards 1, Ward 3, Ward 4, and Ward 5, and the Parks and Rec Commission, Ward 1 and Ward 2, and one at-large. And in order to be considered for this position, you must be resident of the city of Twinsburg, hold no other public office in the municipality, and, let's see, that's about it for, for most of them, right? Oh, and then, the ward-specific one, you must live and reside in that ward. I have a community relations meeting tomorrow again at the library at 5:30, or on Thursday at the library, I'm sorry, Thursday at the library at 5:30, and that's all I have for my report. So, Mr. Fury.
Thank you. I attended a finance meeting earlier this evening, and I don't have any other committee meetings scheduled at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sorese.
Thank you. Good evening. The finance committee did meet earlier this evening, and we were finalizing the proposed capital budget for next year and working on getting all the appropriations that we need for 2015. Twins Day Committee met last week. The process is moving along well for next year's festival, and things are looking pretty, pretty good as far as numbers and so forth for preregistrations. Next year is the 40th anniversary, so they're trying to make it really special and a big, significant event, so working to enhance several different facets of the Twins Days Festival. Also, I met yesterday with the Twinsburg Baseball League representatives, and this was a follow-up to some things that we had met earlier as far as getting some things done here on some of the ball fields and planning ahead. And we basically laid out a calendar for 2015 and set up some things that they would like to see happen and working out our schedules as far as our service department getting these projects taken care of. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McDermott.
Yes, the Architectural Review Board met the 8th of this month and had five items on their agenda. The first item was 2150 Gary Drive addition to the slab, and it was approved as noted. Next was 8499 Darrow Road Garage Edition for GE Rotorstotz. It was approved as noted. Next was 2377 Enterprise Parkway Kel-Tec Technologies. In addition to one of their buildings, it was approved as noted. And the last two items were Holdy Homes, which were approved as noted. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor.
Thank you, Mrs. Stauffer. Just a couple of items this evening. First of all, I would like to congratulate Amy Moore. She has agreed to accept the nomination for Vice Chair of the AMATS Technical Advisory Committee for 2015, so we're very proud of you, Amy. Thank you. Obviously, her colleagues have voted her into that position, and I know she will represent the city of Twinsburg well, so congratulation. That's quite a prestigious position. Also, one of the things that we take pride of here in the city of Twinsburg are all of our environmental efforts and getting the community involved in environmental initiatives, and one of them is recycling. We just received a report from Waste Management, and our recycling participation percentages range from 80.8% all the way to 97.6%, so that is pretty incredible. We have one, two, three, four, five different weeks here that they, there was, we have so much participation, they actually count the ones who don't participate, and I have no doubt with the big bins that they have, those are probably out the next time they collect. So, congratulations, city of Twinsburg. Those are great recycling numbers, and we really do appreciate it. With that, we have our finance committee report this evening from Karen House.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to report for the November collection of local income tax. The city income tax receipts for November 2014 is $1,817,421 compared to last year, This reflects a 9.85 or 10% increase or 162,924 more over last year. Refunds and adjustments in the amount of $36,458 are also reflective in the November collection. Total year-to-date receipts collected for 2014 is $21,504,844 compared to last year's collection of $22,976,411. This reflects a decrease of 6.4% or $1,471,566 less over last year. The net cash distribution applied due to the quarter percent rate reduction is $238,600. And that's all I have to report.
Thank you, Karen. Derek Schroeder, Proxima Creation.
Couple updates I wanted. I've gotten some questions about when Which Which is opening at the Fitness Center. I just met with them this morning. They're hoping for a mid-December opening. They have a shipment that was delayed getting here on Friday, I think, due to the weather. It should have arrived, I think, this morning. So, they're, they're looking at a mid-December opening for Which Which, and they're going to have some, a grand opening week that they're doing here, so it'll be pretty exciting. And I'll send that out when an actual date has, has come. We've selected our cast for Shrek the Musical. It'll be in February 2015. Rehearsals are going on now. It's a large cast between Twinsburg, Twinsburg Township, and Reminderville residents. I think it's 114 cast, so it's a big undertaking, but we have a lot of good volunteers, a little theater committee that's kind of stepped up and put together and really working out a lot of the admin parts of it. It's a lot that doesn't happen on the stage that needs to occur. As usual, the Fitness Center is open on Thanksgiving Day for a few hours in the morning, so we will not be, the pool is not open, but the gym, there's a few classes going on, so you want to check out what classes are available on Thanksgiving. We've been doing that for years now, and it's been very successful for those two, few hours. A couple of things coming up, like Mr. Yates had mentioned, Luminosity's coming up on November 29th. It has been, it's turned into a monster. It's growing and growing, but it's going to be, I think, pretty spectacular here in town. Hopefully, it's a nicer day than today, now that it's cold. But we'll deal with it. We'll be starting here at City Hall at 6 o'clock. The elves will come, so you'll be seeing the elves popping up over town, and on Facebook, if you haven't already, the elves are coming, getting it ready for the holiday season. We'll be starting here, having a little show and the light show that you can see, hard to see when it's not lit up, but it's on City Hall right now. Then, we'll be marching down with stops along the way on Ravenna Road to the square, where if you can see the tree, it's pretty, I think it's an awesome sight on the square for their tree. We'll be doing, there's a lot of cool things coming to the square. So, I don't want to give it all away, but it'll be pretty lit up, fire, lots of other cool things going on on the square that you don't want to, you don't want to miss out. I think it'll be two hours. I don't think it'll be more than two hours, starting here at 6, it'll be done by 8, but there's lots of free food, refreshments, hot chocolate, cookies, smores. It should be... be pretty spectacular. The road will be shut down for a little while, so we will send that out when we know the exact times. Probably between about 6:30 and 7:15, Ravenna Road will be closed, kinda like the Memorial Day Parade route. And then, we do that, then December 6th is Winter Wonderland at the, at the, no yawning. It's gonna be exciting. The Winter Wonderland at the Fitness Center on the six, I'm sorry, 7th. And then December 13th is Breakfast with Santa, and what's exciting about Breakfast with Santa is that we're doing it at the Firehouse. So at the fire station, we'll be doing Breakfast with Santa this year. I think it'll add a little twist and a cool element to that event, so that will sell out, I think, especially this year, so residents wanna sign up ASAP for that. And that's all I have. And someone left a phone up here.
And Derek, I see you're getting, starting to get lots of elf pictures here for the contest, and one of these kids is going to get to turn on lights at City Hall and one at the township, so keep sending in those elf pictures of your kids and yourself. Your selfie.
Elfie.
Elfie, elfie selfie. Thank you. And Larry?
Good evening, council. Mayor. As discussed earlier today, council, our planning commission approved a small expansion for GE Power Systems. It's, um, actually an expansion of a storage building on site. GE continues to have good luck in, in a couple of their product lines, and this basically is a reflection of that. Also, as we discussed earlier tonight, planning commission recommended a number of distributed antenna locations and a couple of recommended alternative locations that we will discuss further at another meeting. On council tonight is the rezoning of Mr. Raymond Purgat's property at 2561 East Aurora Road from C5 to C3. It's on its first reading and we anticipate a public hearing on that prior to the, any action by council. Last Friday, I attended a ribbon cutting ceremony at Discovery Hearing Solutions here in Twinsburg and wanted to formally welcome Discovery Hearing Solutions to the community. This Thursday, I'll be participating in tour, in a tour of Verizon Wireless's Twinsburg Center. This is a large facility that expanded just a few years ago by adding a 50,000 square foot server center to their facility, and it's a LEED certified building, I'm really looking forward to learning more about their operation here. The Damon's Restaurant on Wilcox Drive was sold at auction on, on November 5th. I have not been able to learn who has purchased it yet because it has not closed and the auctioneer will not disclose the purchaser until after the transaction is closed. So as soon as I become aware of that, I'll let everybody know. With Amy Moore, the city engineer, we're continuing to pursue, pursue roadway improvement planning. Basically, we're looking at the widening of State Route 91 to three lanes and we're working with URS consultants and reviewing their price proposal and hope to bring that before council very soon. A local company, Integrity Staffing Solutions at 2132 Case Parkway, has been recognized as one of Crane's Cleveland Business Fast 50. This is the first year for, for Cleveland Cranes to do this. The Fast 50 companies, they have to be at least five years old, have at least $5 million in revenue, reflect an entrepreneurial spirit, innovative business tactics, and have, must have increased or be experiencing increasing, significantly increasing revenue growth. Integrity Staffing Solutions currently has 13 employees. They've experienced 145% growth over the last couple of years, hence that's, they qualified for the Fast 50. So congratulations to Integrity Staffing Solutions. Just kind of a couple notes here on the, on the economy and how things are going in this area. Team Neo and the Greater Akron Chamber have begun submitting information about the Medina Portage Summit County area as an area, and summarizing some of the statistics from that area. And some of the significant things showing that the economy is, is strong here is basically the employment in, in this three-county region continues to increase at a higher rate than the state of Ohio and the US. In addition, unemployment rates in the Akron area are strongly declining to a lower rate than the state and national lever, levels. Pardon me. The workforce in the Akron MSA, which includes the city of Twinsburg, continues its upward trend with the highest increase of 4.8% percent growth in professional and service employment, educational and health services with 1.9% and manufacturing with .8%. In Twinsburg, we, our largest sector, employment sector is manufacturing, it's experienced .8% growth. The second largest is education and health services, which is, has increased to 1.9% rate. So we're happy that things are trending in a positive direction. Operations at the Akron Canton Airport, which is an indicator of freight, things coming through the airport, have increased by 6.5% year-to-date. Unfortunately, the passenger side is down 10%, so more freight coming through Akron Canton, there's less, fewer passengers compared to last year. And the other bad thing is that the overall construction activity in the Akron MSA is down by 42%. So while employment's up, unemployment's down, and things are looking positive in the workforce area, construction activity continues to suffer in the, in this area. So if anybody'd like a copy of the Greater Akron Chamber's economic indicator report, I'd be happy to forward one to you.
I'll plug that, please. Thank you.
And that's my report for tonight.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Larry. That's all we have this evening.
Okay. All right, let's move on to the legislation, then. We're gonna begin with ordinance 114, 2014. Shannon?
In order to accepting the lands and improvements dedicated to public use for the Corbett Farm subdivision, phase one, and accepting a maintenance bond.
This is the third and final reading, so I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance 114, 2014. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, I made the motion, it was seconded by Mr. Roden. Any discussion?
This is, this is a standard maintenance bond that we do for all improvements. It's just part of the process of developing Corbett's farm. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Shannon, please call the roll.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Sorese?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Ordinance 114, 2014 passes by a 7-0 vote. Resolution 115, we're gonna pass over for tonight. We're going to move on to ordinance 116, 2014. Shannon?
In ordinance amending the current year appropriations for the general revenue account as established in ordinance 19, 2014, the appropriation ordinance for the city of Twinsburg for the year 2014.
Okay, this is also in this third and final reading, so I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance 116, 2014. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, I made the motion, it was seconded by Mr. Scafidi. Any discussion? Shannon, please call the roll.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. Sorese?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Sorese?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Sorese?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Sorese?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Sorese?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Sorese?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Sorese?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Sorese?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Sorese?
Yes.
Resolution 125, 2014 passes by a 7-0 vote. Next, we have ordinance 126, 2014. Shannon?
In ordinance rezoning two parcels of property located at 2561 East Aurora Road, Twinsburg, Ohio, from C5 mixed residence, residence business use to C3 interchange business use.
Okay, that's the first reading. We now have ordinance 127, 2014. Shannon?
In ordinance amending salaries, wages, and employment descriptions for certain employees of the city and updating the classifications of employees to be known as the 2015 salary ordinance.
Now, next we have resolution 128, 2014. Shannon?
A resolution declaring the necessity and intention of the city of Twinsburg to appropriate certain interests in real property necessary for certain improvements to Darryl Road located, located generally between Glenwood Drive and Post Road.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution 128, 2014. Is there a second?
I'll second.
I made the motion, it was seconded by Mr. Yates. Any discussion?
This will affect nine properties that have not yet agreed to a settlement for the widening of 91 between Post and Glenwood.
Any other discussion? Shannon, please call the roll.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Sorese?
No.
Mr. Fury?
No.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-2. Next, we have ordinance 129, 2014. Shannon?
In ordinance amending section 105.01 of the codified ordinances of the city of Twinsburg to describe and identify new wards and boundaries in accordance with the report of the districting commission as required by section 3.02 of the Charter of the City of Twinsburg.
Okay, that stands on its first reading. Now we have ordinance 130, 2014. Shannon?
In ordinance authorizing and directing the appropriation of certain interests in real property necessary for the improvements to Darryl Road located between Glenwood Drive and Post Road.
Okay, that's also on its first reading. And finally, we have ordinance 131, 2014. Shannon?
In ordinance amending section 147.34 Employee Recognition of the Codified Ordnances of the City of Twinsburg.
Okay, that's, that's on its first reading as well. That's the end of our legislation. Next, we'll move on to unfinished business, new business and miscellaneous. Mr. McDermott?
I have nothing this evening, thank you.
Mr. Sorese?
Nothing, thanks.
Mr. Fury?
Nothing this evening, thank you.
I'd like to congratulate Amy on her, on her appointment, is that right? Congratulations, Amy. And I'd also like to welcome Discover, the Discover Hearing Solutions to Twinsburg. That was a nice ribbon cutting event, so I'd like to welcome, welcome them and wish them luck. And that's all I have. Mr. Scafidi?
Thank you. I have nothing further tonight, I just wanna wish all the residents a happy Thanksgiving next week.
Thank you. And Mr. Roden?
I have nothing this evening.
Mr. Yates?
Nothing for me, also just wish all the residents a safe holiday and Thanksgiving next week.
Mayor?
Same here. Happy Thanksgiving and a safe and wonderful holiday with your family and friends.
Mr. Maestros?
Nothing additional, thank you.
Nothing additional. And I see, we have a motion here. Under unfinished business?
Actually, I do have a motion to make. This is a motion, I guess, approving the preliminary subdivision platform, Fox Hollow subdivision, that was approved by Planning Commission on November 2nd, 2014.
Okay, Mr. Yates made the motion, Mr. Fury seconded. Shannon, please call the roll.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Sorese?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to enter into an executive session to discuss matters pursuant to Ohio Revised Code 121.22G1, land acquisition.
And litigation.
And litigation, oh, and litigation, okay. Can I have a second, please? All right, I made the motion, it was seconded by Mr. Fury. Shannon, please call the roll.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Sorese?
Yes.